Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the August 23rd, 2021, Pennington County Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations from the Planning Committee, from the Planning Commission, excuse me, on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on September 7th, 2021, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forums, which are available in the Commission chambers during the meeting. If you're an applicant or an agent on an item, it's not required, but if you're here and you'd want to speak on an item for which you're neither of those, I would ask that you fill one of those out and turn it in at this box down here on the lower left. First item on the agenda is roll call. I would note that everyone is here. Lloyd is here from the board. First item on the agenda is approval of the August 9th, 2021 minutes. Does anybody have any corrections, changes, or edits to the minutes?
I move for approval. Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Second item on the agenda is approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda consists of the consent items, which are items three through seven, followed by normal items eight through 12, and our end-of-meeting items 13 through 17. Are there any changes or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Point order. We can't do a motion.
You're right about that, Charlie.
Okay.
My apologies to the group.
Move to approve.
Second.
Was gone one week, look what happens. Motion and second for approval of today's agenda, further discussion. Noting none. And now, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We are at the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Curtis Sack, environmental planner. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items, and according to staff's recommendation by a single vote, any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners to make the final decision. For agenda item three, conditional use permit review CU 1408, based on Electric Power Cooperative, to review in addition to an existing electrical substation. Staff's recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit 1408. Item number four, conditional use permit review CU 17 dash 28. Laura Pan Kratz is the applicant to review two existing signs to be relocated on the subject property, to allow for two existing signs to be located within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district slash dwelling unit, and to allow for two existing signs to be located closer to each other than the requirement of no sign shall be located in, closer than 1,500 feet from all other signs. Staff's recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 17 dash 28. Item number five, conditional use permit review CU 1808. Stromer Properties LLC is the applicant, Brooks Stromer, the agent, to review an illuminated on-premise sign within 1,500 feet of a residential zoning district slash dwelling unit. Staff is recommending to end the conditional use permit CU 1808. Item number six, conditional use permit review CU 1908. Jeffrey Shear is the applicant to live in a recreational vehicle camper while building a single-family residence. Staff's recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1908 with conditions. And number seven, conditional use permit review CU 19 dash 15. Samuel G. Fullerton III is the applicant to review a caretaker's residence on the subject property after a single-family residence is built. Staff is recommending approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 19 dash 15 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on any of the consent items? Does anybody in the audience wish to speak on any of the consent items? And I would note for the audience, for those that are not familiar with our process, items three, four, five, six, and seven will all be voted on with a single vote by the board being part of the consent agenda. Anyone want to speak on those? Noting none. Is there a motion for approval of today's consent agenda?
I move.
No move. Second.
Got a motion and a second, further discussion. Noting none. All those in favor of approval of today's consent agenda signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brings us to item eight.
Good morning, Commissioner Tuti Masabun, Planning Department. Agenda item number eight, conditional use permit CU 2148, to allow a recreational vehicle to be used as a ranch hand residence. The zoning, oh, I'm sorry. The applicant is Lori Harris, and the applicant is here in the audience if you have any question. The zoning ordinance lists seven criterias that the Planning Commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit application. The criteria are on the screen, and staff will read the findings. Criteria one, yes, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, no, the neighborhood is comprised of residential stick-built and modular homes and accessory structures. However, the living in an RV is not present in the neighborhood. Staff cannot predict the effect of property values in the neighborhood. Criteria three, no, the requested use is not in harmony with the existing land uses in the surrounding area. Criteria four, no, the subject property is located within the City of Rapid City's one-mile septic jurisdiction. The city's public works state that the existing on-site wastewater treatment system does not have a permit, and he has concerns regarding the wastewater disposal from the RV. Criteria five, yes, access is on 143rd Avenue via the existing approach. Criteria six, no, the property is a zoned agriculture district but not taxed agriculture by the Pennington County Department of Equalization. The requested use does not conform to the allow-use of the zoning district and does not meet the specific requirements of a ranch hand residence. Criteria seven, no, the future land use of the subject property is rural residential district. Allowing this conditional use permit is not consistent with the current comprehensive Ranch hand residence criteria. Criteria one, no, the requested ranch hand residence is not a modular or mobile home. Criteria two, no, the subject property is not taxed agriculture. The property consists of single-family residence and loofen, lean-to and loofen shed. The on-site wastewater treatment system is within the City of Rapid City one mile septic jurisdiction. The city does not have any information about the existing system on the subject property. That is a current violation COVO 21 dash 007, leaving an RV camper without the approved permit. The requested use was routed for interdepartmental review. Emergency services state that, if approved, it will need a separate physical address. County Ordinance Enforcement stated that this property currently has a violation. However, with approval of this conditional use permit, the violation will be closed. City of Rapid City's Public Works stated there's concern regarding the existing system on the property and the wastewater disposal of the RV. Staff comments, staff verified with the Public Works Department regarding the existing system. The system is required a current permit. The department has sent a notice out to the property owner that is no open violation at the moment. Staff spoke with the Department of Agriculture, I know, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. The staff spoke with the Department of Equalization and verified that the property is not taxed as agriculture. Staff performed a side visit and verified that the RV was on-site. The applicant's husband stated that no one has occupied the RV at this time. Staff recommends denial of the applicant's request as it is not in harmony with the existing lots, current land uses, or future land use destinations in the area, and does not meet the Pennington County zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff on this item? Does the applicants wish to speak? Okay. Yeah, if you would please come up and then go ahead and state your name when you get up to the podium.
Good morning. My name is Lori Harris Jobins. I actually am the landowner. I purchased the property in 2016. Since that time, there have been multiple RVs on the property. I was not aware that I needed to have a conditional use permit, so please accept my apology in that regard. Basically, over the last five years that I've owned the property, I've had some issues on the property with theft and loss and the opening of gates and et cetera for my animals. I do have horses that live on my property, and I've had issues with neighbors' animals being on the property as well. So, I actually work out of state half-time, and so therefore I needed to have someone at the property to be able to maintain that. Therefore, this was an idea that I had to at least explore the option. It's not always easy these days to find a person that will be able to be on the property, and so I thought I could utilize this method to attempt to see if this was going to be an option for the future. I did not understand that I needed a conditional use permit. I didn't understand that my property was not being taxed as agriculture. I bought my property as agriculture. I expected that it would be agriculture. I intend to be agriculture until I no longer own the property, so there is no plan on my part to change it to anything, and I'm not aware of what the county's future land use for my area is. My neighbors certainly have agriculture, and on both sides, across the road is a field with cattle, so I would not have understood that there would be additional use that was being planned for the property.
Okay.
Questions?
Questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Go ahead.
What kind of agricultural use do you do on your property?
I have horses. I have a herd of horses. I also have a few chickens, but horses are mainly the use that I have.
Have you talked to Equalization about changing your...
Until now, I didn't know I needed to, so I certainly will going forward, absolutely. Which is, you know, all of this is new to me. Understanding that when I went to apply for the conditional use permit because of this was when I understood that the septic was permitted up until June of this year. I have not received anything from Equalization, or from the city regarding that. I'm planning on taking care of that as well, but it was permitted. I bought it permitted. It was permitted until June of 2021, so therefore I'll get it taken care of. That's not a problem whatsoever. My husband and I, who is standing beside me, are the only people that occupy the house, so it's not like we have a family that are going to be utilizing the septic system. We weren't even to the point of planning what the septic requirements were going to be, because this was just a fairly new addition to our property. I do have a living quarters horse trailer that lives on my property that no one lives in. I mean, it stays there. I have a 35-foot fifth-wheel motorhome that has been there for, or fifth-wheel, I'm sorry, not motorhome, but a fifth-wheel that's been there for six years. I've not had any issues, any concerns, any complaints, nothing like that. Nothing has been hooked up to the septic system. We hadn't even gotten far enough to decide how this was all going to work yet.
This is the current...
That's not mine. That belongs...
It's not hooked up to the septic system?
It's not hooked up to the septic, no. It's not hooked up to water either. It's only hooked up, right now, there's just a refrigerator inside that's plugged in. That's it.
And there's no one currently living in it?
No.
But that one doesn't belong to you? That belongs to someone else?
Yes.
Questions for the applicant?
You stated that you travel, like, half the year. Do you live there full-time?
That is my address, yes. I do live there full-time. That's my residence. I actually am a nurse consultant. I work for a long-term care company in California, so I travel there half-time and I work here in my remote office half-time.
Okay. So then, your husband lives there?
My husband lives there, yes.
Full-time?
Yes, and he owns a building and a business in Box Elder, so he's not there during the day either, which is when we continue to have issues. I've had people go into my house, open all the doors, all the windows, turn on all the lights, the television, et cetera, and I've had horses let out. I've had things stolen from the property, so, you know, I'm really trying very hard to be responsible and to protect what we own.
Mr. Chair. Go ahead.
Ma'am, I feel for you, but for accessory structure on a property, this doesn't meet it. I mean, I understand what you're talking about, about wanting that, but the whole intent of the accessory unit on properties was a stick-built building, so it complies to the neighborhoods in the community that it's in and so forth. Quite often, we just had something like this two weeks ago with a fifth-wheel, somebody wanting to park it on their property and use it as an Airbnb, rent it out and so forth, and we denied that. And we're having great discussions over RVs and parked models and that type of thing, how they're taxed and so forth, so it doesn't quite meet, doesn't meet the requirements of the accessory. That's why staff recommends denial.
I understand.
And I understand your situation. You want, you know, you have 20 acres and you'd like to have someone else, but that's the same thing as wanting to rent one out to somebody. We wouldn't be able to say no to somebody who wanted to put a fifth-wheel on their property and rent it out. The whole idea of accessories is someone to have a fixed building structure for family members, or someone who watches over the property that's got to be there 24/7.
Well, and that could possibly happen in the future, but as you all know, it's not easy to find someone that will work for, you know, for you in this kind of a capacity and all of that. And I honestly, before I went to that level, would like to find someone reliable enough to show up to work five days a week or whatever. You know, and I mean, you know, I'm not, I'm not shirking my responsibility. I understand where the county commissioners and where your planning committee are coming from, but I'm trying to find a temporary solution so that I can get my head above water. My horses are worth a million dollars. I have a horse, I have a stud horse that's worth $35,000 to $40,000. I can't afford to let, have someone hit him on the road because someone came along and let him out of his pen. You know, I mean, those are the real concerns that I have, and I totally will work with the Planning Commission to figure out what options I have.
You do understand that they do recommend denial for...
I do understand that they recommend denial, but I was not present when the young lady came to my property. My husband was. He was trying to work on my best interest. I was in California at the time. I was not able to speak with her, so that's why I'm here. Besides, I was planning on coming here today anyway, so...
I think we got attorney...
Megan Creager from the State's Attorney's Office. So, Chutima tried to go out and speak with them about their potential options, and the reaction was quite aggressive towards her. She didn't feel comfortable staying out there on her own, so she ended up leaving and recommending denial on this. The couple options that they have, if they can be taxed as ag, it depends on how much money they're making off of the property every year. There are certain requirements that you have to be meeting to be taxed as ag. They would have to talk to Equalization about that to see if they can meet those requirements. If they are taxed as ag, then they could put a mobile home out on the property, and that is a use back right in agricultural. Thank you.
So, I'd like to address that. So, when the young lady called and asked me to come out to the property, she asked me to come out for the conditional use permit. I was under the impression that she was looking at the RV and at, and so I had no idea that she was wanting to look at the entire property itself. So, my husband is working under my best interests, not, you know, not trying to be uncooperative or anything, but we'd like to understand what it is that, you know, we need to do and what we don't need to do. So, I apologize if she felt uncomfortable, but also she wasn't forthcoming in telling me that she wanted to look at the entire 20-acre property either.
I'll just add to that, please.
Go ahead.
When the young lady came out there, she led me to believe that she wanted to take pictures of every building on the property, the whole property, and I was to produce building permits for all the buildings, and I, that was the point that I argued on. The level of aggression was met by the same level of aggression from the young lady that came out there, and I have a witness here to prove that, because he was there with me. And I didn't know why, when she was only out there to look at where an RV was going to be. She wanted me to produce building permits, and if I hadn't got them, she wanted me to come to you people or to this office and apply for them all.
So normally, when staff goes out and reviews a, an application for such a thing, there is a review of everything else that is happening on the property to bring it into compliance.
I have to stop you for a moment, because it doesn't tell you that in the paperwork that you go to work with, with the conditional use permit. I don't see, I have the application paperwork right in front of me. It doesn't talk about anything that you have to do in addition, except for applying for the permit itself.
But there's a current violation on the property, correct?
Excuse me?
There's a current violation listed on the property?
The current violation is in regard to this RV, which I didn't understand that I needed a permit to have in the first place. So that's the only...
You said that.
...violation, with the exception now of the septic, which I wasn't aware of either. So, I, you know, I don't understand.
When there's a violation, it would be no different, when there's a violation, everything on the property gets reviewed. Anytime there's a permit requirement, the items on the property get reviewed, so that this is a normal, standard procedure, if you will, of review of what's there and how to bring it into compliance.
I would have appreciated that, because I've spoken to the Planning and Zoning Office upstairs multiple times, especially when I was attempting to apply for the permit. No one ever said that. No one ever told me that, and they didn't refer me to any standard language that would have required all of that. So, I was doing what I thought that I was supposed to be doing and caught by surprise, and I also did not put my husband and our friend to have anything happen besides looking at the fifth wheel. So, if that's the case, I'm just saying, in the future, I would just really like to understand the entirety of what happens in this process, which is not what I understood.
The staff can certainly explain the process to you and what happens in the process. I have two questions for you.
Of course.
Do you understand why the camper is being denied?
Not particularly, no, because it's not hooked up to any septic. It's not hooked up to water right now. There wasn't someone living full-time in the camper at the time, so whatever was the complaint in the first place, I don't understand that. What I'm also trying to explain is that I've had fifth wheels there on the property since the beginning of owning the property, so I don't understand what's the difference between that and what's, and this.
Were people living in them for the past six years?
They were not living full-time in them, but they're not living in this either.
Right. So currently, no one's living in there? This is simply a camper on your property?
Yes.
Okay. You're coming to apply to have someone live in a camper on the property?
That's right. That's what I understand.
Okay. So, having someone live in the camper on your property is not an accessory structure, and so it doesn't meet the standards, if you will, of our current planning and zoning for the property. Do you, are you willing to discuss with staff to put a permanent structure on there instead of a camper?
Yes, but what I was trying to explain to you was this was a temporary solution until I could determine what a permanent solution was going to be, and I don't know what that means. I mean, I don't know, I can't say that in one month I'm going to have a plan. I just needed to have this option available in the meantime. I'm afraid for losing the items on my property. I've had multiple, you know, issues there, and I can't be there. I'm trying to work in California to make enough money to be able to do everything I want to do.
Okay. We've already lost one stud.
Yeah.
We had to put one stud down because of a neighbor's animals that got into our place and forced him to jump over a fence, and he busted a tendon in his rear leg, and that was the end of him.
Yeah. I'm sorry to hear that.
We were sorry to hear that, too. But this, these are the type of things that are happening.
Sure.
And we're trying to stop them. I cannot be at the property full-time.
Right.
I have another business that I run in Box Elder, and these people all know my movements and when I'm there and when I'm not there. And weird things are happening and things are going missing, you know, it's just an ongoing thing, and it has been for the last couple of years.
I just find it interesting that there's been a complaint when, when there hasn't been complaints before, and we've had all these issues happen, so it makes me curious as to, why are we complaining? Is it because you now don't have free rein to my property? I'm sorry, but you know, I'm kind of a doubting Thomas at this point.
You, I, you could go back and review the videos for years, I'm sure, of this Planning Commission, but these things happen routinely in the county, so it's not new to anybody up here.
Of course.
I can assure you of that. Do you have something to add to the...
I just wanted to point out that actually on the conditional use application, it does indicate that they have read and received a copy of the instruction sheet, application form concerning the filing, and hearing of this matter, and that he authorizes the Pennington County Planning Department staff and designated to enter onto and inspect the above-described property, and that she has been advised of the fee requirement. All of this is in the paperwork when they go out, and it's fully explained to people that they're going to be doing an inspection of the entire property.
I don't agree with you, ma'am. Thank you.
I don't agree with that either.
Well, it is in your paperwork.
Maybe it was in the paperwork, but it was never explained properly.
It's not explained, no. And that means many different things to different people.
I was under the impression that it was just the site and the RV that was going to be inspected.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Are you aware that there's additional conditions you've got to meet for agriculture?
Yes, sir. I understand that. I didn't know that we weren't meeting them, and so I will be pursuing that as we go forward. Like I said, I bought my property six years ago. I bought it under agriculture. That's what I thought it was. That's what I, I mean, I had no idea, so I will take care of that.
Zoned agriculture and taxed agriculture. Zoned agriculture and taxed agriculture are two different things because of the criteria. I'm and I'm trying to point out to you, I have forty acres. That's agriculture, but I don't get taxed agriculture.
Well.
So I understand what you're saying, but you've got to be aware of that, too. And you, as the property owner, are the one that's responsible for that. You certainly have notice on your taxes that you're not getting ag, haven't you?
I I'm I don't know, sir. I'm I'm not. I'm just pleading ignorance at the moment, but I will I will find out what it is that I need to do. So I please understand that.
Okay.
When you when you say on your taxes, do you mean the taxes that we fill out every year?
No, the taxes you get taxed and the rate you get taxed. That's your responsibility.
I understand.
Yeah, it it's important to know. It it can be zoned one way, but allocated to a different use during the assessment of the property. And the assessor assesses it in whatever condition it's being used as, which may or may not be in violation of the zoning.
I understand. I my point that I'm trying to make is this is exactly what I've tried I've done for the last six years. So.
I I I I understand, but it it sounds.
So I'll I'll take care of that.
Yeah, it sounds to move ahead that, you know, you need to go back and
Yes.
visit more of the planning department.
Go ahead, Charlie.
And I just want to throw in one more thing. Did when you bought the property, did you buy it from a family member, somebody outside your family?
No, sir. I bought it from a local agent here in town through a real estate company. I I took them at their word that they told me that it was zoned agriculture, that I could use it as agriculture, and and that's exactly um what I've done.
The same in regard to the septic? In other words, they had a septic?
Yes, sir. And it was it the um, the permit was done in 2015, and I I didn't realize that it's only a five-year permit. So I didn't realize that until I talked to the planning commission and went to fill out the paperwork where it talks about the septic, that it was in any kind of um issue. So, you know, I I felt like it was completely legal. So I do still need to talk to the city
Right.
person, but if they sent the mail to my residence, I don't get mail there, so I wouldn't have received it. So I will I will follow up with them and go forward.
I thought you did get mail.
I get mail in Box Elder, sir.
Okay.
I mean, that's my mailing address at the business. I don't get mail at my house.
Your business address?
Yes.
That's all our mail for everything that we operate goes there. That's that's our head office.
I mean.
But then he should have got it to you.
We didn't get it.
We didn't get it.
City didn't notify you that that
No, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is is if they mailed it to 5,143rd Avenue, I don't get mail there. I don't have a mailbox there, so I wouldn't have gotten notifications. So.
Okay, if you're saying the site address, in other words.
Yes, sir. So part of
I understand.
Part of all of this is to go back to them and say, you know, I need you to start at square one and help me figure this out.
The only reason I brought it up was because that's going to be important on any future action on this, too, whether the septic's in place to handle this.
Yes, I totally understand. And and whether I need to get, you know, if we do a separate residence, then what we need to do, I mean, all of that has to be planned in the future. I don't even know what that looks like at this minute, let alone coming to you and asking you for approval.
I just didn't want you to think that the county, we're not gonna zone your property different at this point in time over any action or anything else.
Right.
It's zoned what it is zoned until somebody else changes it or requests to change it.
We were unaware that it had to be taxed separately. That wasn't when we were bought the property, she was told she could do anything agricultural, and that was where it finished. And we had no understanding that you had to approach the equalization for a different
Certain criteria, that's correct.
We only found that out the other day.
Yeah, I believe it's three or four things you have to meet, and you have to meet three out of the four, two out of the three.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll follow up. Thank you. I appreciate your candor.
Further questions for the applicant?
Just one comment. I I think you we all learned something here today. I mean, you have your the whole deal is is that to live on it, you can have your campers on your property, but to to live it and do what you want to do. Now you now you know about the tax and the zoning that you need to do, that'll help you step up to get to be able to do what you want to do. And, you know, as far as the septic goes, you know, I think that's probably a gap in the system. They probably whoever had it inspected last time, that that address is on there, and that's probably where it got mailed to. So it's very easy for you not to get that notice, but
Right.
at least you know it. Quite frankly, I know, too. I mean, I know we're doing inspections, but.
Well, the the mailing address from the county is the Box Elder address.
Right. And so I don't know what the city, I didn't even know that all of that. So I'll I'll figure it out.
For the comments, questions?
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
I believe that this complaint was an anonymous complaint. I don't know whether that's true or not.
I don't either.
But when do we have the right to face our accusers? Or do our accusers continuously put anonymous complaints into you people, and you people then button it up like this?
So your, you know, your your question is, um, I I don't know if I can answer the first part of your question, only to say that a a lot of items um that we see up here are based off of um complaint, start as a complaint. Um, they might be someone as yourself that that doesn't realize that something isn't necessarily okay to do within the county, and that's how these things start. Uh, we see a lot of that up here. I I'd say twenty percent of what we see up here is is things very similar to this. Um, it doesn't mean that it just because it's happening or that it's happened for the past six years that it's okay and that it's and that it's going to continue. Um, and we are we're not a we're not a police state. These things, the these things get brought to the attention of the staff, and they have to then follow up on them, uh, you know, once they're once they're notified. But I can't, I can't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to your question about um complaints, anonymous complaints, how that's how that's handled um in our in our process. Um, do you know, um?
Do you think it might be equalization that actually made the complaint?
Okay.
When we get an inner office complaint, then Duane goes out and looks at the property.
So it was an inner office complaint that was brought forth, Duane goes out?
I believe it was equalization, but we're just confirming that it was.
Okay. So then my next question is, is then are are complaints normally provided? Has this person submitted this complaint, or are they submitted anonymously?
Not typically. Um, and we don't always give them over. Um, it just kind of depends on the situation. I mean, given that it was equalization, they probably made the complaint because they saw the structure out here that they need to be taxed. But I need to verify that it was equalization.
Okay.
This is a couple of reasons why I ask that question. One is that we've had unidentifiable vehicles pull up out in the street and take pictures of our residents, and when they were challenged, they took off. The other thing is that I had a similar complaint with Box Elder City Council at one time. Someone put an anonymous complaint in about my business. When it got to the city council, they said, we do not operate on anonymous complaints. For that reason, to stop them escalating into a
Sure.
volume.
Yeah.
So I just wondered if it was the same here.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I can share a little bit with you on that, because I've gotten a lot of complaints from beyond the city council and with the commission. A lot of times, what it is, it's code enforcement and so forth. If there's a complaint or concern, that's addressed to them, they they do keep it anonymous. But when they go to check on a violation, depending on what it is, they do for the whole area. It's not just one specific deal or one separate property, unless there is a a problem with that property. Um, and that and that's how how they operate. And they don't, as far as like on the city and us, we don't give that out because that just creates, I mean, they evaluate what what it is, that if it's valid or not valid. But I mean, they don't strictly on one person. Now, you're dealing with Box Elder, so Box Elder may operate things a little bit different. So but from looks of this one here is that they were probably out doing assessments, reassessment the area, and it come from an internal concern over what didn't have to do with violations of of upkeep or anything along those lines.
Go ahead, Cody.
Cody's an environmental planner. So if a complaint comes from anybody but like equalization or an inner department, they have to fill out a complaint form with their name. Um, we don't take anonymous complaints. They actually have to sign their name. Uh, we don't give it out um more because if that information's given out, it can lead to neighbor disputes and things like that. Uh, um, so we'd never give it out, but we never take anonymous complaints. We have a name.
That's a good
in case it ever goes to court or anything.
They still have to give a name with the person, yeah.
Well, if that's the case, why was I told that there was no signature on the form?
I don't know the answer to that. I if it's an inner if it's an inner office, um, then there probably isn't between one office in the county and the other office in the county.
Well, I was told definitely that there was no signature on it, that he couldn't identify who it was.
Okay.
So if it comes from equalization, Duane will fill out the the complaint form. There's just no signature, um, but it's to keep track of the paperwork. Duane will fill out a a report.
Okay.
Would it be so difficult that if he did that, and I asked the question, that he couldn't give me an answer? That's that's my point.
So you've talking to Duane?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
And I have, too. And I asked that same question. I just it it just helps me understand where this is all starting from and and what we need to do. I certainly have no intention of having disputes with my neighbors. And frankly, if there's a dispute with a neighbor, I'd like to resolve it amicably, if at all possible. It just seems very unusual to have this happen on the heels of some of the other things that I talked about previously.
Sure.
That's the only reason. I'm 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 just trying to understand.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Hopefully, this clear clears it up, because because from the sounds of what what's happening on your property, and the way this was brought up, that kind of clarifies it's not somebody around your area that's pointing fingers at you. It would sound like it was internal and so forth. So I hope that helps clear your mind a little bit that it's not a vengeful act.
If I could know that for sure, then it would possibly, but I don't at this point.
Everything I heard just now
I'm not convinced. I'm sorry.
Makes it point that way.
And thank you for attempting to ease my mind, but honestly, it really doesn't at this point.
Yeah, so we we can let Steph follow up on that, and and then um they can give you a call.
Thank you.
Regarding that. Um, I I have to tell you that that based on what what is being asked for, I I can't support this a as is. However, I understand the plight that you guys are in and what you're trying to accomplish by doing this, if you're willing to follow the 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 standard of um how we do things or how things are done with a with a stick-built residence as an accessory structure, as a ranch and residence. If you go back in in previous meetings, there are numerous examples where this type of thing um is is approved, what it's approved following the the rules that are set forth that that everyone abides by. So um, but I I we we can't open, in my mind, I, for my opinion, I I don't think we can open the door uh to allow this with with a with a fifth wheel. So I won't be in support of this, but I do appreciate you coming here today.
Um, can I ask another question before I leave?
Go ahead.
So so there's been a movement across the country to put in what they typically refer to as a tiny house, um, which is basically a mobile residence that would be a stick-built residence, but it just happens to be uh movable. Would something like that comply to your requirements, or is that something that is not also going to comply with your requirements?
Let me have Cody answer that question.
Uh, Cody's an environmental planner. So we do have a ADU ordinance in the zoning ordinance. If it meets the criteria, um, you can do the ADU unit that takes a conditional use permit like this does, uh, but that is an option.
Okay, thank you.
So I I would really encourage you folks to to have a conversation with with the planning staff about the the available options and what 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 would be proper moving forward um so that so that we can get this whole issue resolved for you folks.
Thank you.
Further questions for stat or for these of the applicant? Excuse me. Hearing none. I'll sing none. Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none. Um, with that, staff recommends denial of the applicant's request, as it is not in harmony with the existing lots, current land uses, and future land designations in the area. Uh, is there a motion?
Don't move.
Second.
Motion and second for denial. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine.
Chutima Saboon, Planning Department. Um, item nine, I would like to make a correction on on the introduction request. This conditional use permit is CU 2149, but on the staff report is 2148.
Noted. Thank you.
All right. Um, so this conditional use permit is to allow an accessory dwelling unit to be utilized on the subject property. The applicant are Kyle and Claire Schmidt, and Claire is on the the on the Zoom if you have any question for her. Okay. Um, the location of the property is 13989 Perry Place. Staff performed a side visit to the subject property and spoke with the applicant. She stated that the purpose of the the purpose of the proposed accessory dwelling unit is for personal personal use and family members to stay stay in when they visit. It will not be rented as an Airbnb or vacation home rental. The fall plan showed that the square footage is approximately approximately six hundred and seventy-five square feet. However, however, the existing garage that the ADU will be located in is located in front in the front yard of the property, which does not meet the requirement of um accessory dwelling unit section. Staff met with the applicant to discuss with the applicant, um, opt, I'm sorry. Staff met with the applicant to discuss of options for more appropriate use of the accessory structure. The more appropriate use for the subject property is a guest house. The applicant resubmitted a conditional use permit application with a guest house as a requested use. Staff is working with the applicant regarding the new requested use. Therefore, staff recommends to continue conditional use permit CU 2149 to the September 13, 2021 Planning Commission meeting to allow the applicant to re-advertise the conditional use permit request and to resend the notice of hearing letters for a guest house on the subject property.
Thank you. Does the so I was notified that um the applicant is on Zoom, but uh she doesn't, does she want to speak to the commission if this is going to be continued to the 13th?
I can do whatever would be helpful. Can you hear me?
I can I can hear you. Um, this is currently, uh, the staff's recommendation is to continue this to September 13, 2021, and you're okay with that?
I am.
Okay, then I I think we're gonna wrap up here.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Got a question for staff.
Okay.
I know. I can't believe that I do either. Are they aware, you know, the only thing on the guest house thing that I see here is uh separate utilities. They're a long way away from hooking up to the main building.
Um, staff verified with the Black Hills Electric, and it's on one meter.
Good. What about the and the water and and everything then comes from the same and septic?
Um.
The only reason I bring up is because, don't forget, they need a variance from the the way we have the zoning ordinance written, is all I was bringing up.
Okay.
Because it's gotta be tied, and I looked at the location, and it is quite a ways from the main house.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the electric is from one meter, and the septic, um, they 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 have a separate septic, because the um, the shop, the garage, was permitted with the bathroom in there, and therefore, the septic is the existing septic for the shop. And And they didn't increase, um, any septic stuff.
You feel like you're going to be comfortable to meet the guest house, what I'm saying, because we list it all as one, being tied to one set of utilities? Cody, what do you think? Am I out on a limb here, sawing it off?
Cody's a environmental planner. For the general utilities, there's that, the requirement in the guest house, so they have to be tied to one. If the, um, the service provider allows them to do separate, we usually allow them to do separate because it's the service provider.
Without a variance.
Without a variance. And then, uh, um, for the septic, it, it states in there that, uh, a separate one can be approved with the approval of the environmental planner. And since the second one was already approved, um, our environmental planner, Aaron T. will sign off on it. The way we look at it is it doesn't matter if they have to expand their drain field up top or have another one down here. It's the same amount of contamination going in.
Thank you for further enlightening me.
Motion is to continue to the September thirteenth meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I said motion. I meant recommendation. Motion and second, um, for continuation to the thirteenth. Further discussion? Noting none. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item ten.
Yeah, Cody's a environmental planner. Item ten is Condition Use Permit Amendment CU fourteen dash twenty-five. It is to amend an existing condition use permit to increase the size of one of the existing storage units from forty by one hundred and eighty-four feet to fifty by one hundred and eighty-four feet. The applicant and landowner is Jeff Devaney. The location of the property is two-three-eight-five-five Highway three-eighty-five. Uh, current access is off of Highway three-eighty-five. There is one hundred-year flood plain on the property and current zoning is, uh, Highway Service District. With proving condition use permits, we take a look at the seven criteria. As they appear on the board, I'll read the answers. For number one, it appears by allowing this condition use permit, it should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety or general welfare of the public, especially considering the storage units are currently on the property and the use is already established. Number two, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use of enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Currently, the property has two storage units, the area has several other commercial properties. Number three, allowing this condition use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any of the surrounding property in the area. Number four, access is off Highway three-eighty-five. Number five, the subject property is an approach off of three-eighty-five and one off of Panula Gulch Road. For number six, the property is owned Highway Service District. Storage units are allowed with a condition use permit. And number seven, uh, the future land use of the subject property is Highway Service District. Allowing this condition use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Uh, currently, there are two fifty by one hundred storage units on the, actually forty by one hundred storage units on the property. The applicant applied for fifty by one hundred. This was routed around for an inner department review. There are no major comments or concerns that were received. Uh, condition use permit fourteen twenty-five is originally approved to allow fifty by a hundred storage units on the subject property. According to Department of Equalization records, the storage units were built to forty by one hundred. Uh, back in June, the applicant asked to, um, extend the storage units and at that time the conditions were changed to allow forty by one hundred and eighty-four. Uh, but the applicant, one of the storage units on the eastern side, he would like a, uh, ten-foot addition to make it a fifty by eighty-four addition. Uh, with that, staff is recommending approval of condition use permit CU fourteen twenty-five with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Noting none. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff recommends approval of condition use permit CU fourteen dash twenty-five with eleven conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item eleven.
Uh, item eleven is Vacation Easement VE twenty-one dash oh-two. It is to vacate the existing utility easement on Valley View Track revised to Lakota Lake encampment subdivision. The applicant is Kyle Weiss. The agent is Herbert Engineering. The location is located off of Tracker's Trail near Pennington County and Custer County line. The property is one point eight-four acres. It is currently vacant and it's a planned new development district. Uh, currently on the property, uh, the property is vacant, so there is no structure or septic system on the property. This was routed around for an inner department review. Uh, regis- it was routed to Register of Deeds. Uh, Register of Deeds came back and said on Exhibit Two, Note Two needs, uh, two thousand six and page one-seventy, uh, correct. They have a D instead of an, a zero, otherwise the exhibit's okay. Uh, as of the staff report, the exhibit was corrected and no objections or concerns were received. Uh, the subject property was platted on November twenty-ninth, two thousand and five. On April fourth, two thousand and six, the subject property was replanted in order to remove the, and modify the property lines. The easement being vacated is a twenty-foot wide utility easement that follows the lot line and no longer exists. So that line on top, uh, that's the existing, um, power line. And from my understanding, the power line was moved to the, was actually placed in the, in the southern part. Uh, so this utility easement appears no longer required. Uh, so staff is recommending approval of vacation easement VE twenty-one dash oh-two with conditions.
Questions for staff on this one? Noting none. Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Hearing none, seeing none. Uh, staff recommends approval of vacation of easement VE twenty dash zero-two. Um, with the condition that all, that the necessary resolutions and exhibits vacating the easement be recorded by the applicant at the Register of Deeds office. Is there a motion?
I move that VE twenty-one oh-two be approved.
Second.
I said twenty oh-two. It's listed as twenty oh-two in the recommendation, but it is twenty-one dash zero-two, correct? Correct, yes. All right, note that for the record. Motion and was there a second?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item twelve.
Item twelve is Minor Plot MPL twenty-one dash fifty. It is to reconfigure lot lines to create lots seventeen R and twenty-three R of Block D of MS nineteen sixteen of otherwise mountain development. The applicant and landowner is Tim and Terry Du- or Tara Duda. Uh, other landowner is Bruce and Fay Peterson and the agent is DC Scott Surveying. The size of the properties are two-point-six-one acres and they are vacant of any structures. Uh, for property history, lot seventeen is zero-point-seven-six acres and is vacant of any structure. Lot eighteen is zero-point-six-two acres and vacant of any structures. And lot twenty-three is one-point-two-three acres and is vacant of any structures. Uh, for the proposed lots, lot seventeen R, so the southern lot on your screen will be one-point-one-seven acres. It'll contain a thirty-foot private access easement, uh, Danny B. Lane and a fifteen-foot utility easement. And lot twenty-three R, the northern lot there, will be one-point-four-three acres. It'll also contain a thirty-foot private access easement, Danny, Danny B., Dan, Danny B. Lane. Uh, it'll also contain a fifteen-foot utility easement and a forty-foot private access in utility easement to lot seventeen R. And there is a section line located on the property. This was routed around for an inner department review. No major comments or concerns were received. On May fourth, twenty-twenty-one, the Board of Commissioners approved subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-one dash zero-five to waive the requirement to dedicate and improve the section line crossing on proposed lot twenty-three R. Uh, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request, says it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land use in the area. So staff is recommending approval of minor plot MPL twenty-one dash fifty with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff on this one? Noting none. So note that there are no, um, no one in the audience to speak on this item. Staff recommends approval of minor plot MPL twenty-one dash fifty with five conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved for approval.
Second.
Motion and second for approval. Further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item thirteen, county board report.
Uh, for, the Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from their August ninth meeting.
Okay. Anything to add to that? Good. Items from the public, noting none. Items from staff, fifteen.
There'll be a marijuana, marijuana ordinance on the next meeting. Jerry has a little more information on it than I do.
So currently it's slated for the thirteenth and the twenty-seventh.
Yes, yes.
So this is first hearing of the ordinance on the thirteenth.
There's four of them. There's like a definition of terms.
Four hearings or four ordinances?
Four ordinance amendments, my heavens, for the marijuana stuff.
And are we taking all four on the thirteenth and, and all four on the, on the twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to keep asking questions as if that's okay. Are they, do, do, do they roll into each other where they have to do, we have to do one and they have to be in sequence? Or can, will some, can some be approved and some not be approved?
I would suggest that they be in sequence, um, just for the fact that, um, they are kind of enrolling orders. So the first is definitions, the second is for the CUP. The third is for the development plan and the fourth is for the actual license.
Okay.
So that is the trajectory of application that people are going to have to go through and they do cross-reference to each other.
Okay. Questions?
I do. Um, would it be possible to get the ordinances emailed to us ahead of time?
Yeah, as soon as they're, they're
I don't want to have to study all weekend.
Advertising hits, they'll be done finalizing and then when that happens, you can email them out.
Jay and Tracy, um, at the State's Attorney's Office are looking at them. In addition to myself, I've looked at them and now they're both looking at them. So once they're done with them, we're looking at probably Wednesday, um, is when we're going to publish and then we can send out copies to everybody.
Wednesday of this week or Wednesday of next week?
This week.
Okay.
Does, does every county, are we all reviewing the same ordinances?
No.
Or is this specific for Pennington County?
Specific to Pennington County and every county and municipality is doing it a little bit different.
I see. Wow.
Plus the city.
Yes. Yeah, I've gotten a copy of the city's ordinances, um, and have reviewed some of them.
So rules are going to change from city to city and from county to county.
Yes.
Yeah. As long as they're in line with state statute, it's, it's going to be interesting, so.
To say the least.
Anything else from staff? Good job today, Cody.
Thank you.
Way to step up. Items from the membership. It's going to be interesting here over the next few meetings.
What did you say?
Said it's going to be interesting over the next few meetings.
I'll just pass on that I gave, uh, your report to the commission over that, uh, one denial that we had at our last meeting with the, the fifth wheel. I present, brought that up at our commission meeting and the reports to, I think we're going to start seeing more stuff like that. So I just brought it up to give a report and then I reported to them all the items that you guys approved all at once, so.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add to that too. I think that our standing up for the staff when they try to do these things becomes very important on some of those issues. Uh, and I know sometimes I comment a little harshly to our clients that come before us, but when I believe they're, they're pulling my leg a little, I do that in lieu of, uh, their comments about the staff. I don't appreciate that and, and, and I, I, I see other members don't either and I just, I, I would hope that doesn't go away. Thank you.
Noted. Anything else? No items from, no further items from membership. Item seventeen is adjournment. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion and second for adjournment. Further discussion? You sure? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're adjourned.